You feel a lot of the car some?
Are you on here? You're good, okay.
Good afternoon, I'd like to call for order this June 7th, 2023 Lake Charles City Council meeting, regular meeting. I'd like to ask Mr. Ginn to please lead us in the invocation. A reminder to turn off your cell phones. Ask Mr. Ginn to lead us in the invocation and followed by Mr. Eckers to lead us in place.
That is great. We tell God our Father, we thank you for being in our presence this afternoon. We thank you for your grace and your mercy that you have given us. We thank you for all the great gifts of life. And now as we deliberate on the business of the city, we pray that you will be with us and as we do business, let it be done decently and in order. In Jesus' name we do pray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Eckert and Mr. Ginn. Ms. Tibido, please, do you roll call?
Yes, sir. Ms. August?
Here.
Mr. Ginn? Mr. Eckert?
Here.
Mr. Ayew?
Here.
Mr. Harvey?
Here.
Mr. Marks?
Here.
Mr. Weatherford?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. We have received a copy of the minutes from the May 17, 2023 meeting. Any additions, deletions, or concerns about these? Then please vote to accept.
Seven four.
Appointments, number one, appointed chairman to review business project number CP9778 Civic Center Chiller Replacement. Mr. Harvey, would you take that?
Yes, sir.
All right, and I'd like to pull up Resolution Item Number 36. Citadel people have been here several times in support of this and I appreciate their efforts in coming not only to this meeting but the agenda meeting. They're also here tonight to answer any questions we may have on this resolution. So if the council has no objection, I'll read a resolution, item number, what did I say? Thirty-six. A resolution, amending resolution number 96-18, passed and adopted by the Lake Charles City Council on August 15, 2018, approving Citadel Completions LLC for participation in the industrial tax exemption program at 3900 Chanel Parkway, Lake Charles, Capuchin Parish, Louisiana. Would any council person have any questions or comments on this?
Yes.
Mr. Marks?
Mr. President, could you explain what is being amended? I mean, I understand amended the resolution, but what is the amended?
Mr. Morgan, do we have that?
Yes, the amendment we... The amendment is to extend the agreement for three additional years and then on the Exhibit A lays out the payroll and number of employees. I would ask that Citadel representatives explain that part, too.
Sure. Hi, Margaret Badcock for Citadel Completions.
Come on up to the mic and again, I'm sorry, your name and address for the record.
Margaret Badcock, 3900 Chanel Parkway, Lake Charles. So we're asking for the amended exhibits. When we first initiated this project, we overestimated. So we're asking the council to approve the headcount to go to 130 headcount, new jobs, and a corresponding $10 million payroll.
Mr. Marks, any other?
You said you overestimated?
Yeah, we overestimated. We counted all headcount around our facility. We didn't account for some people living over the Texas border, contractors, that type of thing. So to stabilize the company, so we don't have to come back here before the council, 130 is a really good, solid number it takes to run our facility with people who live here in Lake Charles.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, please vote for this resolution.
Seven four.
Again, thank you all for coming, appreciate it. Going to move back to the irregular agenda. Item number two is Public Hearings, An Ordnance Order Demolition Authorized City Lake Charles entered into an agreement for demolition structure located at 619 Enterprise Boulevard. Trayvon M. Gums, owner. Mr. Hester?
Good evening, council. This is a hurricane dam construction. You can see in the pictures, there's roof damage, exterior wall damage, exterior window damage, all exposed in the interior to severe weather damage of the structure.
Offered in the record photographs of subject property and proof of service through certified mail.
All right, Ms. August, I have a card from the public and that would be L. Gums. Mr. Gums, you want to come on up?
Good evening.
Name and address for the record, please.
Lee Gums, 261 Caldera Street, Paris, California.
Thank you for showing up.
Yes, sir.
What would you like done with this property, sir?
Well, I don't want it demolished. In fact, those conditions have been taken care of. I cut the grass again, the roof has been repaired. All the windows are fixed, there's no broken windows, it's secure. And I installed a ring doorbell on it to keep people out. So I like to keep it so we can, we want to fix it, keep it in the family.
Any questions for Mr. Gumm or Ms. August? Do you have any recommendations?
Mr. President, the last time I spoke with, the last time Mr. Gumm was here, he informed us that he had taken care of certain things and then the inspector went out and the inspector was not satisfied with what had been done. I realize that Mr. Gumm has traveled quite a bit to get here, but I would like for the inspectors to go back or had someone inspected recently to give us an update on anything that Mr. Gumm has approved because we can't, he can't keep going back and forth and this could become a problem. I'd like this to be settled.
Thank you.
Mr. Gumm, do you mind if Mr. Hester addresses that question on the microphone?
No problem.
Those pictures are from last week, so they're updated pictures. Have you done anything before that?
Yes, sir. I have them here, but unfortunately my phone is not working.
These are the updated pictures, Mr. Gumm?
No, ma'am.
Here?
The updated pictures of them was on my phone.
I'd really like the inspectors to make a physical check up sometimes.
This was taken just today.
And when did you do that?
This happened on the 3rd. I hired Ms. Ashley Lawn Service. She went out and cleaned it all up.
But the house, the repairs?
The repairs happened, I was here last time. The roof, the backside of the roof where it was broken, it's all fixed on this side, new shingles.
So those should be accurate pictures to yours.
Correct.
So these are accurate?
They're accurate except for the fact that the vegetation is...
Okay.
And right now I have a guy that I hired to do this, going to paint it. And everything is cosmetic right now. As far as what happened to get the vegetation of my gardener for like the last 30 years, Mr. Earl Wilts died since the last time I was here. And the grandson took over and it would just collapse and he claimed his grand and all that.
Mr. Gumm, how much time do you think you need to...
It depends on...
...meet specifications according to city codes?
I'll be back on the 1st of Jan-, I mean, the 1st of July. And then that time I should be able to do it in a couple of weeks.
This is June, I'll give you 60, 90.
Okay.
I'll give you two months to pull a permit, three months to finish the work.
Okay.
And then I'm trying to get here July 1st. You have two months to get your permit, three months to finish, but you three months. But there are 90 days that comes in, so there are 160, 90.
Okay, so I have 90 days.
You have total of 90 days, but you can't wait until two days before the 90 days and...
Well, I'm a teacher and unfortunately tomorrow is my last day at school, so I won't be there with my students tomorrow.
Yeah, I understand and I sympathize with you, but there's been a lot of complaints about this particular piece of property and I want to give you ample time, but I also have to be very careful about your neighbors and what they're trying to do. So I think at this point, the only thing I could do for you is 60, 90.
Okay, so a lot of the interest in it also, I get about four or five calls in a week, which, you know, leads me to believe that, you know, I don't know what's going on, but for some reason the interest is perked up. I don't want to sell it. I want to keep it in the family. I want to do the repairs.
I understand, Mr. President, 60, 90.
Recommendation for 60, 90, any questions? Please vote.
Seven four.
Thank you, Mr. Gumm.
Thank you.
Item three, An Ordnance Order Demolition Authorized City Lake Charles entered into an agreement for demolition structure located at 1528 Commercial Street, Chester Joseph Dagel, owner. Mr. Hester?
This is a hurricane dam construction. It's a residential structure. You can see in the pictures, there's roof damage, exterior wall damage, exterior window damage, all exposed in the interior to severe weather damage of the structure.
Offered in the record photographs of subject property and proof of service through the marshal's office and the appointment of the curator.
All right, Mr. Harvey, I do have a card from the public, Chester Dagel and Ms. Dever. All right, y'all come on up? Y'all both want to speak or one of you?
I'm ready, Deborah.
Okay, Ms. Dever, your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Deborah Dagel and my address is 120 Montego Lane in Sunset, Louisiana.
Welcome. What would y'all like to do to the house, ma'am?
We're working to have the house demolished. We've already obtained, young man, a company here in Lake Charles and they are going to take care of demolishing the house for us. But right now we are still getting some of the contents out of the home, so we would need at least, I would say, 60 to 90 days as well to finish.
Mr. Harvey, your recommendation?
So if they're going to demolish it themselves, we just have to give them time to get the contents out?
They can, yes, they can, you can set like a 30, 90, they've asked for 90. You can set 30 for them to pull a permit and 90 for them to get their items out and demolish it.
So 90 days you're saying, what's the vice, what?
Yes.
Mr. Hester, has a comment?
I have this listed as PPDR property.
It might be.
So it means we can demolish it for you and you won't be charged. So the city has a program where the city will demolish it, federal government reimburses, FEMA reimburses for the demolition cost. So we can, we can keep it in that program and you all won't have that cost.
Okay, how do we contact someone to have a discussion, more of a discussion about that?
You can contact me. I can give you a phone number.
Okay.
It's not the red.
Okay. Be careful, David.
And your name, sir?
David Morgan.
Thank you, sir.
So we still okay with the 30, 90? That was going to tell them to get the contents out and then they can go to the PPDR program?
Right, and we can notify the PPDR program that we're given 90 days to get contents out.
Oh, we appreciate it, haven't we?
And you might want to give a heads up to whoever you hired, just so we know. All right, recommendation for 30, 90, please vote.
Seven four.
Y'all have to save a trip.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item four, An Ordnance Order Demolition Authorized City Lake Charles entered into an agreement for demolition structure located at 927 and 927 and a half Mill Street, Jesse Lee Carmen and Deidra and Carmen owners. I do have an amendment to this. The amendment is basically taking out the first 927 because that was the home structure and that is being dealt with in a different manner. So only tonight, we're going to deal with 927 and a half Mill Street. So before we vote on this, I'm going to ask for the amendment to be voted on and then as amended, or as amended to then. So just to be clear on that, this is just for 927 and a half Mill Street. Mr. Hester?
Okay, this is a hurricane dam construction. It's residential. You can see there's roof damage, exterior wall damage, window damage, all exposed in the interior to severe weather damage of the structure. And this one is PPDR.
And offered in the record photographs of subject property and proof of service through the marshal's office. We thought, I mean, obviously 927 and a half is in bad shape. We felt like we might be able to save the home if we went through administrative hearings, so we are continuing to work on 927 Mill, but it'll be through administrative hearing. If we can accomplish anything there, we'll bring it back to the council.
All right, just, we do not have a card from the public, Mr. Harvey?
So the focus is on 927 or 927 and a half?
We're asking that it only be 927 and a half that you all deal with tonight. 927 will refer to the administrative hearing, all right, sir?
For 927 and a half?
For 927 and a half?
Why not, 927?
927 and a half.
And a half, 1530. Okay, recommendations for 1530, I'm going to ask that you please vote as amended, for the amendment of taking 927 out, please vote. And 1530, 1530 as amended for 927 and a half, please vote.
Seven four.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Item five, An Ordnance Order Demolition Authorized City Lake Charles entered into an agreement for demolition structure located at 315 North Gaugh Street, RPG Investments LLC owner. Mr. Hester?
This is a hurricane dam construction. It's commercial. There's exterior roof damage, exterior wall damage, exterior window damage, all exposed in the interior to severe weather damage of the structure. And the structure's been open to the public for about two and a half years.
Offered in the record photographs of subject property and proof of service through the marshal's office.
I do not have a card, Mr. Harvey, again.
We would say several complaints about this, can we go 15, 15?
Any problems with service, 15, 15 is a recommendation, any questions? Mr. Marks? Cory?
Yeah. I've been in communication with Rico Gil, he said he wanted to repair... He's got a purchase, a purchase of furniture. Did he indicate that to you, Paul?
No, he did. I think he secured one window and one door, but that's it. Nothing else.
That was his communication to me as recent as my death.
Did he need more time, or?
He didn't. I thought he was going to be here, so he was asking for more time, but I thought he was going to ask for it soon.
All right, Ms. Harvey, what's your recommendation?
Yeah, we can set it for another hearing date.
Yeah. Since Mr. Rubin's that thing, we can set it for another day. I mean, if he's had communication with him?
Yeah, Monday or Monday.
Maybe go for the first meeting in July, which would be July 5th.
July 5th.
All right, deferral to July 5th, 2023, please vote.
Seven four.
Item number six, An Ordnance Order Demolition Authorized City Lake Charles entered into an agreement for demolition structure located at 612 Louisiana Avenue, Jim Only Sacred Heart Roman Catholic Church, owner. Mr. Hester?
This is a hurricane dam construction. You can see in the pictures, there's severe roof damage, exterior wall damage, exterior window damage, all exposed in the interior to severe weather damage of the structure.
Offered in the record photographs of subject property and proof of service through certified mail. I think Mr. Bergers has been in touch with the owners?
Yes, sir, and Ms. August as well, I believe.
Yes, I spoke to Randy Goodlow, the architect who's helping, architect who is assisting the diocese in getting this reimbursed through demolition through FEMA and they're requesting a deferral for about 120 days to tighten up all of the things and check all the boxes so they can move forward with demolishing the structure. And he has developed a demolition plan going forward, so.
You okay with this, Ms. August?
Yes, sir.
All right.
We set it for October.
Ma'am?
Believe it or not, it's Mr. Arm's gift to God.
I'm sorry.
I'm in favor of that, I'm a member.
October 4th would be approximately 120 days.
Okay, so deferral to October 4th, 2023, please vote for deferral.
Seven four.
Item seven, another August Harvey type of councilor is... An Ordnance Order Demolition Authorized City Lake Charles entered into an agreement for demolition structure located at 2411 Mill Street, New Jerusalem Baptist Church Ministries Ed Al owner. Mr. Hester?
This is another hurricane dam construction. You can see in the pictures, there's severe roof damage, exterior wall damage, window damage, all exposed in the interior to severe weather damage of the structure.
Offered in the record photographs of subject property and proof of service through the marshal's office.
Do you have a card? Minor Rogers? Antoinette? You here just in case you need, in case you have questions or you want to say anything? Okay, come on up.
Good morning.
Your name and address for it?
Minor Rogers, NTR Management, I'm the project manager for New Jerusalem Baptist Church. Similar to what you just said on the past site, is similar, but we just entered into agreement with FEMA. The difference is this entity just had a change because the pastor died, had a change in leadership, but we just entered into the process of getting the building to demolish. So I got to develop the same thing, the demolition plan. So I just got the criteria to start that process to get the building to demolish.
Okay, so Ms. August, this is yours, right?
It is, sir. How long does it take to get some kind of response for this? Because this has brought in a lot of complaints. And I know that the original pastor died, but it's, people like to talk. I think they said his son took over, so it's two years of war now.
Actually, the son can't take over as a nonprofit, so they had to have a new board, they had elected officials. So that's a little different than a LLC. So I had to, they had to have the change of power. We had to get the designation authority turned to the FEMA. Now we moving forward, they had to go through the SBA denial process, we passed that. So now we in the process of getting approval for the demolition of the grant. So now I gotta do the same stuff that was just taken where you just approve, where you got to get an architect involved to come up with the estimates because now we have to look, FEMA is going to make us do a repair versus replacement, but it's the same process to come up with the demolition plan.
And you don't have any idea of how long all of this is going to take? Because this has been ruined now, that's all I'm asking. Do you have any idea how long?
To get it demolished?
No, FEMA may take to give a resolution on whether they're... Is it for sure that FEMA is going to come in or you just apply?
No, no, we already in the FEMA program. So we're in the process of giving them all the documentation to get the approval for the grant. So somebody got to develop the cost, but first we had to get approval to get to this stage. So without having, in their case, the people in place to make those decisions, it was hard for me to move without that official authority.
Honestly, okay, I understand, but my position is we can't wait indefinitely, so I'm trying to find out just about, you know, what time limit do we have here?
To get it demolished, that's an easier process because that's like the emergency preparedness. So I'm thinking if we stay consistent, 60 to 90 days to get approval for demolition. But that's not renovation or rebuild, that's a whole different animal. So to get it demolished, that's a quicker process.
So are we looking at demolition or are we looking at renovation?
We, again...
Either or?
Oh, so, no, so basically, in this case, the entity has no insurance. So basically, from cradle to grave, I'm trying to rebuild the whole entity to bring that asset back to the community. So from cradle to grave, that's a longer process, but right now I'm just focusing on what's at stake, which is the community worried about a dilapidated property just sitting there, just being unmaintained. So that's what I'm addressing first.
Ms. August?
Mr. President, I'm going to go 60, 90.
All right, Mr. Hester has been wanting to add a comment?
I took these pictures and if you go back, you can see it's a dangerous situation because it's leaning on the, it's fixing to fall on the other house next to it. So I would say it's an emergency situation.
Thank you for that comment. Mr. Marks, do you have a comment?
Just for clarity, I live with Ms. August, so you're saying 30 to 90 days we ought to be ready to demolish it?
Yes, for to demolish the building.
How about you say 60, 90?
Yeah, that's what, so it's two questions she asked. She asked me about the approval, how long it's going to take for FEMA to give us a response. That's 30 days. Of course, the same process that you have to do to hire any public entity, I have to procure over a 30-day period. So if you want me to, you know, some things I thought was in line with what we already know. So 30 days, I should have my demolition plan approved by FEMA. 30 days where I'm going to have to bring in a contractor because I'm using public funds to come onboard. And then 30 days to try to procure a schedule to get them to do the work. And then thirty days to try to procure and schedule to get them to do the work. So I'm just giving you the, the information at hand, but I just emailed him because, again, FEMA feels the same way. This building needs to be torn down.
So basically, I'm just saying, within ninety days?
Yes.
The building's gonna be gone in ninety days?
Yes, because it's, it's, again, everybody agrees to the same thing.
This one is, uh, sixty-nine, my original.
Any questions on that? Please vote for sixty-nine, your recommendation.
Seven-four.
All right, thank you, Mr. Rogers. Item eight, ordinance ordering demolition authorized to Lake Charles. Enter into an agreement for demolition structure located two oh one Reed Street. John D. Lewis, Farrell and Pierfax Lewis owners. Mr. Hester?
Um, this one's been demolished. Um, there's the new building.
All right, so did we delete?
Yeah.
Delete it.
All right, any, uh, objection to deleting it? All right, then we'll move, delete that and move on. Item nine, ordinance order, ordering demolition authorized to Lake Charles. Enter into an agreement for demolition structure located seven forty Azalea Street. Randall W. Browning owner. Mr. Hester?
And this is a hurricane damage structure. It's a residential structure. You can see there's roof damage, exterior wall damage, exterior window damage, all exposed in the interior to severe weather damage of destruction.
Offered in the record photographs and subject property and proof of service through certified mail.
We do have a card from the public, Randall Browning?
Yeah. Yeah, we've been cleaning up here lately.
Just, uh, your name and address for the record.
Uh, Randall Browning. I live at seven ten Lake Charles Street, Reed, Louisiana.
All right.
Okay, well, I'm gonna try to do is fix it, okay?
Okay.
And give me sixty to ninety days to do this. And, uh, well, I'm trying to, I'm still, I got a cradle behind there now trying to clean it up. But you can walk over the roof and it don't, you know, it won't fall in on you. It's, it's good. It also has, three years ago, it has a new electrical service put into it, okay? That's on there. And the plumber's on slab, so your plumb's okay too. So all I need is about sixty to ninety days to see if I can't get this thing fixed, okay? And I'm gonna haul all, all the stuff off there. I've got a twenty-two foot cradle behind there and me and my wife have been doing this by ourselves. I'm seventy years old, okay?
All right, Mr. Winifred, your district, your recommendation?
I file with, um, sixty-nine.
All right, recommendation for sixty-nine. Any discussion? Please vote.
Seven-four.
All right, thank you, Ms. Brown. Item ten, an ordinance ordering demolition authorized to Lake Charles. Enter into an agreement for demolition structure located twenty sixteen Knapp Street. Margaret J. Fontno, Louis P. Fontno, Jr., Lorraine Ann Fontno Baldwin and Teresa Luisa Fontno Selena owners. Mr. Hester?
This is a burnt structure. It's a residential structure. You can see in the pictures, there's burnt damage to the roof, exterior walls, windows, interior.
Offered in the record photographs and subject property and proof of service through the marshal's office and certified mail.
We have a card from Lorraine Ann Baldwin. Your name and address for the record, please.
Uh, Lorraine Ann Baldwin, um, fourteen forty-three Crawford Drive, Lake Charles, Louisiana, seven zero six one one.
What would y'all like to do to this?
Well, first we thought about repairing it, but since we're having prob, we're having problems with, uh, replies from general contractors that we knew about. Uh, my brother, sister and I decided we're gonna go ahead and demolish it. But the, most of the fire damage is on the east side of the house. The west side of the house, uh, the living room and kitchen, smoke damage. Uh, the most unstable part of the house is the carport and, um, and.
All right, we're gonna ask Mr. Harvey what his recommendation is.
I actually spoke, um, with Miss Baldwin yesterday, um, and she told me, um, several things. They have some, um, materials that's inside the house that, that has some meaning and value to them. So I'm gonna say sixty-nine. That would give you, uh, so you really get those things out and then give them all.
Sixty days to pull the permit, ninety days to finish the whole thing.
That's even more than what I had asked for last night when I spoke.
He's feeling generous tonight.
That's you, Mr. Harvey.
Mr. Harvey? If I can ask, is the house secure?
Well, the, I need to put a board over the, the, the door on the carport side.
That may just be something that.
Could we, could we do that? I know we spoke about that.
Yeah.
Just to secure the property.
Recommendation for sixty-nine, any discussion? Please vote.
Seven-four.
Item eleven, ordinance ordering demolition authorized to Lake Charles. Enter into an agreement for demolition structure located six two six Interfide Boulevard. Shirley Walker January Estate owner. Mr. Hester?
This is a hurricane damage structure. It's a residential structure. You can see in the pictures, there's exterior roof damage, exterior wall damage, exterior window damage, exterior, all exposed in the interior to severe weather damage of destruction.
Offered in the record photographs and subject property and proof of service through certified mail.
All right, we do not have a card for this, Miss August. I believe it's your district.
Thirty-sixty.
Recommendation for thirty-sixty. Any questions? Please vote.
Seven-four.
Item twelve, ordinance ordering demolition authorized to Lake Charles. Enter into an agreement for demolition structure located three two oh eight North. General Wayne Wright, Ronnie Merlester Robertson and Linda Robertson owners. Mr. Hester?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Mind calling out those names, see if anyone's here?
All right, do we have anybody from the public to represent this house? Uh, Ronnie Merlester Robertson and Linda Robertson?
If not, I would ask that we defer it, um, so that we can try to get service.
Mr. Keane, any problems to deferring it?
No, uh, I was gonna do a fifteen-thirty, but that's a recommendation, uh.
We're gonna have to appoint a curator at this point unless, unless we get certified mail or something in.
Okay.
How, how long do you want to defer?
Thirty days.
Thirty days?
Is this in the state ballot program? It's in that area?
We, we checked. We did, it's, it's got a similar address, but it's not in the state ballot program.
Defer till?
July fifth?
July fifth, two thousand twenty-three. Uh, please vote for deferral.
Seven-four.
Item thirteen, ordinance ordering demolition authorized to Lake Charles. Enter into an agreement for demolition structure located seven two eight Pejo Street. Doris LeBlu Duff owner. Mr. Hester?
This is a hurricane damage structure. It has, um, roof damage, exterior wall damage, window damage, all exposed in the interior to severe damage of the structure.
Offered in the record photographs and subject property and, uh, proof of service through certified mail and the marshal's office.
All right, we have.
I was just gonna ask Mr. Hester if he could comment on the, uh, potential stability of the building. I don't know if it is, show it to you.
In the pictures, you can tell it is definitely Wayne gave it. I thought Miss Duff was gonna be here.
Uh, we do have a card. We have a card from Miss Duff. Come on up, Miss Duff. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is, uh, Doris Duff LeBlu. I live at, right now I'm staying at seven twenty-four Pejo Street, Lake Charles, Louisiana.
That's where you get your mail?
Well, I still get it at seven twenty-eight.
Okay.
Uh, but I'm staying at seven twenty-four Pejo.
And what is, uh, what would you like to do with the house?
Well, I know y'all want to tear it down, but I file with FEMA again for one more try. And, uh, I'm waiting for somebody to come out and give me an, uh, announcement to see how much it'll take to straighten it and level it.
All right, um, so you've been denied by FEMA once?
Yes. And I was turned down because, uh, I didn't own the house long enough. But that shouldn't make a difference. I've been there since two thousand and five.
Okay. Have you ever heard of an appeal to FEMA?
Yes, my daughter has appealed it to me.
And just to be clear, I think she's just talking about FEMA's regular programs, not.
Kind of the E D R.
Right.
Well, I filed with the downtown struck, uh, with Miss Laurie and them at one time. But they told me I wasn't eligible because I didn't own the, the house, wasn't my name, my name long enough. Or I could've got it fixed. Uh, I could've, uh, filed by.
But the intent is to fix the house, it's not to tear it down, correct?
Well, that's my intention was to, yes, to get it fixed, to try it one more time. I'm sorry, maybe I'm crazy, but.
How much time do you think that would take?
Well, I'm waiting to have somebody come out to give me an estimate in the next week or so to find out how much it's gonna cost me to get it straightened and leveled.
Okay.
I know it looks bad, but, uh.
Well, it looks unsafe, is our, our biggest concern?
Yeah, I know, I know. But it's still got good problems.
And somebody's coming out next week to give us?
Yes, probably just, but today, probably tomorrow.
Okay. I, I'd like.
It looks historical, I think.
Yeah, I like this.
It is historical, but it's, it's built in, uh, nineteen eighty-nine.
So the bestie?
I mean, ninety-eight. Nineteen eighty-nine.
All right, we're gonna defer this till you get a little bit more information from your contractor and hopefully some answers from.
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, yes, sir, Mr. Mark?
I, I've been thinking about the last, Miss August's and, and this one. Who takes liability when that house fall?
If it were to fall today?
Like, like the other one we just had, where Mr. Hester said it was about to fall.
Property owner.
Wow.
Property owner, be responsible for it.
Good question, I was kinda thinking the same. Okay, so we're gonna defer it for thirty days. So this is your notice to reappear for the June.
July fifth. July fifth?
Two thousand twenty-three meeting. Okay, hopefully we have some answers.
Yes, sir.
Please vote for deferral.
Seven-four.
Ordinances for final action. Item fourteen, ordinance is acceptable as responsible bid and authorized in the city Lake Charles. Enter into an agreement for project number CP three-three-eight, full power, center parkway sidewalk. Mr. Keane, you had this one?
Yes, sir, we have rejected on this, we need to rebid because we have to find out to, to make it happen.
All right, recommendation is to reject and rebid. Any questions on that? Please vote.
Seven-four.
Item fifteen, ordinance accepting lowest responsible bid and authorized to Lake Charles. Enter into an agreement for project number CP three-four-two-eight. Various citywide drainage and ancillary infrastructure improvements, phase one. Mr. Eckert?
Yes, Mr. President, we have all the bids on this project and the lowest and responsive bid was Hicks Enterprises on the amount of two hundred and thirty-two thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars. I'm gonna accept that.
Recommendation is to accept that bid. Any questions on that? Please vote.
Seven-four.
Item sixteen, ordinance authorizing City Lake Charles to enter into cooperative endeavor agreement with the Louisiana Office of Community Development Disaster Recovery Unit, OCDDRU, for the purpose of receiving community development block grant disaster recovery, CDBGR funds. Any questions on this?
Yeah.
Mr. Marks?
We entered in a cooperative endeavor agreement for what are they giving us? Are we partnering together to spend some money or what?
The, uh, the reason, uh, for the cooperative endeavor agreement is to accept the money. So we still have to put in a proposal and all that fun stuff, but the state requires you to put in, you know, to have a cooperative endeavor agreement signed for them in order to, you know, to, you know, put in your recovery proposal and subsequent applications.
So once we receive the funds, they, we won't have to file anything from then. It'll be our own program.
No, I mean, we, we have to, we have to, we have to do public, you know, like, uh, citizen participation in all of this. We still have, we have to go through the whole process. It's just, for some reason, they have a C E A. It's necessary for the state to have a C E A for us to even be able to move forward with what we're doing.
Any other questions, Mr. Mark?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions from the council? Uh, please vote.
Seven-four.
Item seventeen, ordinance authorizing City Lake Charles to enter to an agreement into a professional service agreement with Burrell Architecture. Any questions on this?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
We have some other architects under professional services agreement, don't we?
Several.
Several. So help me to understand why we need so many?
Well, Ms. Burrell was with another architectural firm and since that timeframe, he has broke off. The other firm had a PSA with us and so allows us to enter to small projects with these, with an architect or engineer with the PSA. But he never had a PSA because he was with another firm in the past and he just broke away.
So we giving it because of him?
Yeah, we're trying to give him the opportunity to continue doing the work for the city, but under another firm.
Okey-dokey.
Any other questions? I'm abstaining because of a, a conflict of interest. So please vote.
Six-four-one abstention, Mr. IU.
Item eighteen, an ordinance authorizing City Lake Charles to enter professional service agreement with Fries and Nichols. Any questions on this? All right, please vote.
Seven-four.
Item nineteen, ordinance authorizing City Lake Charles to enter to a professional service agreement with K and M Project Services LLC. Any questions? Please vote.
Seven-four.
All right, I'm gonna read this in and I think we have some amending to do to this. An ordinance declaring the intent of the City Lake Charles to acquire a full ownership interest of one parcel of adjudicated property identified as parcel number zero zero six one zero six seven four pursuant to Louisiana Revised Statute forty-seven two-two-three-six and providing further thereto with the amendment, Mr. Morgan?
Amendment to section one to add additional interested parties and it reads as follows. Interested parties Edward Weston Estate, Julie Weston Guillory, Donna Western Herbert, Cassandra Weston Joseph Winifred, that, cause I'm sorry, Cassandra Weston Joseph Winifred J. Latte, Elijah Weston Jr., Godfrey Wayne Weston, Michelle Weston London, Larry Weston and Richard or Philip Weston.
All right, uh, we're gonna first kind of vote on the amendment adding those names. So please vote on the amendment.
Seven-four.
Now we'll open discussion on the actual ordinance as amended. Any discussion or questions on this?
I'd just like to know the address.
The address?
There, there's no address, it's, uh, it's like, it's just north, uh, Mount Calvary Baptist Church. The parking, I think, just north of there.
The parking area?
Yeah, it's just to the north, it's a lot just to the north of the church. It's, it, I don't think it ever had an address there, it's just an empty lot.
Miss August?
But it's just a lot, it's just a lot, you know?
It's just an empty lot. Hopefully, it, on this program, we're gonna, uh, transfer it to Mount Calvary for them to, to, uh, expand their parking.
It's adjudicated currently, so we're trying to take possession of it so that we can get it back to somebody.
So is that the gravel area, the gravel area you want to north to the northern part of the property inside that?
Yeah, they wanna expand their parking. I think it's, I think they use it, but it's just a gravel area.
So the church will assume ownership?
Yes, we wanna transfer it.
And we would no longer have to cut it?
Yeah.
All right, so we're gonna vote on this as amended. Any questions? Please vote.
Seven-four.
Item twenty-one, ordinance amending the official zoning map of the City Lake Charles from residential zoning district to a mixed use zoning district at nine oh four Country Club Road. Mr. Bergers?
Members of the council, this item was an application to amend the official zoning map from a residential zoning district to a mixed use zoning district. The applicant presented their request to the planning commission and they denied the request by a vote of two to two. It was a tie vote, so it takes three to pass it. That is a recommendation before this council, so you're voting on the request as presented and that is, the no vote is a recommendation from the commission.
All right, Mr. Eckert, this is your district. The applicant is.
I don't see a card from the public. This, this is basically on Country Club, uh, surrounded by residential and they want a, a little bit to mixed use. There's no particular business for it yet, so to me, this is basically the definition of spot zoning for no other reason. So I would recommend we not approve it.
Recommendation for Mr. Eckert not to approve it? Any questions from the council? Uh, so, uh, you're recommending a no vote on this?
Yes.
A no is to not approve it, okay? Understand? Please vote.
I have two for, five against.
I voted yes to, to no.
No to no.
No to no.
Let's please clear the votes and pre-vote. A no is to no. Please vote. Who's seat four?
Okay. That's, that's.
Okay, that's, that's Mr. Harvey, I mean, Mr. Marks.
Mr. Marks.
Oh, I'm getting them all down.
Seven against.
Okay, item twenty-two. An ordinance authorizing the city of Lake Charles City and the Nelson Market Economic Development District, Nelson Market, to enter into the consent agreement with the E V T, Lake Charles LLC, E V T, and Stifle Bank and Trust, Stifle, whereby E V T is permitted to assign some or all of its rights in the cooperative endeavor agreement with the city and Nelson Market to Stifle and providing further thereto. Now, this is a, a interesting little deal where we're actually the board as well as the voting body. So, Mr. Morgan, would you like to give a comment on that?
Correct, uh, the board, the council is also the board of the Nelson Market Economic Development District. So in acting on this, you're acting on, as the city council and as the board of the development district.
But it's one vote?
One vote.
Any questions on this?
Yes.
Mr. Marks?
What rights are we giving them?
They are, um, you know, the project was done back in two thousand, sales tax has been collected primarily on the rouses. Um, and those are starting to be reimbursed to E V T, who is the developer. Stifle, they're refinancing their loan with Stifle. Um, so this would allow them to, for the funds to go to Stifle instead of E V T. No new funds, it's the same funds being reimbursed, but they can go to the bank if they so, if, if they choose.
Do you recommend this as being a good thing?
I do. And the original C E A allowed them to assign reimbursement rights. And if they, let's say, E V T went under and the bank had to take over, they have the same obligations as E V T did, the bank would. So it doesn't change our relationship, it just changes who we're paying.
You okay with that, Mr. Marks?
Yep.
All right, any other questions? Please vote.
Seven four.
Item twenty-three, an ordinance amending section four point one A, section nine point one point five and section ten point one point two of the city of Lake Charles personal, personnel policy manual to add Juneteenth to the city holidays for full-time employees to receive as a paid day off. Questions or amendments to this? Mr. Mark? Mr. Eckert?
I would like to offer an amendment if nobody has any comments, whatever. Uh, uh, no problems with adding the holiday, but I'd also like to add Veterans Day. We've, we've long looked at Veterans Day, uh, November eleventh, uh, as, as being a potential holiday. And as we're amending the, uh, personnel policy, I would like to go ahead and amend this ordinance to go ahead and add Veterans Day as well so that we can honor our veterans in the city.
Mr. Marks? Yes, sir.
If we were to agree to the Veterans Day, could it be done where it's just the veterans or we have to do the whole body?
You have to do everybody.
Question, answer, Mr. Weatherford?
I'll second that.
Second? All right, so we're gonna vote on Mr. Eckert's, uh, addition of Veterans Day as part of this as an amendment. Please vote on this.
Seven four.
And now we're voting on the ordinance with both holidays, Juneteenth and Veterans Day. Please vote.
Seven four.
All right, following resolutions may be adopted by consent. Would any council person like to have a resolution, um, brought up? If not, I'm gonna read them as they're written. Public hearings for items twenty-four through thirty-one, the public hearing date is, uh, seven nineteen twenty-three. Item twenty-four, resolution set in a date for public hearing on combination of a structure located seventeen nineteen Chanel Street, Eddie Stevens and Mary Lorenzo Stevens owner. Item twenty-five, resolution set in a date for public hearing on combination of a structure located two two oh eight East Church Street, Ben Lizine, Jr. and Wilder Lizine Estate owner. Item twenty-six, resolution set in a date for public hearing on combination of structures located five twenty-one Enterprise Boulevard, Edward N. M. N., uh, Cre- Crecheen-
Crechan.
Yeah, Crechan and Beatrice Stephanie Crechan owners. Item twenty-seven, resolution set in a date for public hearing on combination of structures located three to eight one two Third Street, Marvin Bryan Citizen and Nat Kemp Citizen owners. Item twenty-eight, resolution set in a date for public hearing on combination of structures located three six one zero Greenwich Boulevard, Alberta Latrell Guillory Estate owner. Item twenty-nine, resolution set in a date for public hearing on combination of structures located six two six Orange Street, Laura Jean Schultz, Michael Anthony Riders owner. Item thirty, resolution set in a date for public hearing on combination of structures located two five two one Hazel Street, John Frederick Delaney, uh, Delaney owner. Item thirty-one, resolution set in a date for public hearing in combination of a structure located two two, uh, one seven Barb Street, David Gar, Jr., Laura Lindsay Gar owners. Item thirty-two, resolution authorizing city of Lake Charles to adopt and accept the Public Transportation Agency staff plan, P T A S P for F Y fiscal year twenty twenty-three as directed by the Federal Transportation Agency, the F T A, reused by the Public Works Department Transit Division. Item thirty-three, resolution authorizing city of Lake Charles to advertise received seal biz for project number CP three three four six, lakefront boardwalk phase two. Mr. Harvey, would you take that?
Yes, sir.
Item thirty-four, resolution authorizing city of Lake Charles to advertise received seal biz for project number H L one two four one two six, W W T P Communications Tower Rehabilitation. Mr. Weatherford, would you take that, please, sir? Sir?
Yes.
Okay. Item thirty-five, resolution authorizing city of Lake Charles to advertise received seal biz for project number D R zero one six, lock park restroom demolition and replacement. I'll take that one, Ms. Thibodeau. Item thirty-six, we've already, uh, voted on. Item thirty-seven, resolution authorizing city of Lake Charles to advertise received seal biz for project number D R zero one seven, uh, ball field lighting repairs. Mr. Eckert, will you, uh, Mr. Keen, would you take that?
Okay, I'll take it.
Yes, sir. All right, please vote on the resolution.
Seven four.
Following ordinances or for introduction by consent and will be read to the record the day following this meeting at nine AM in the city council chambers and that would be items thirty-eight through fifty-nine. Meeting adjourned. Minus all.